All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. We're gonna start off with Troop 45 is gonna do a flag salute for us, so may have everybody rise please. Color guards present colors. Hand over heart, flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Go ahead and have a seat. I'd like to welcome you all tonight to the debate for the Westlake Village City Council candidates. My name is Neil Ticton, I'm the founder of Westlake Revelations. I'm also the moderator for tonight's debate. Westlake Revelations and Oak Forest have joined together to bring to this event, and I'd like to offer a huge thanks to Roxanne Stevenson and all the residents of Oak Forest for hosting us tonight.[94.22][94.22](APPLAUSE). When I first conceived of tonight's event, I wanted it to be a community event, for the community, by the community, and of the community. And I'm proud to tell you that we succeeded. An amazing number of questions were contributed by the community, and not one dime was spent on this event, because everybody just stepped up to help. Keikos made us signs, Staples gave us supplies, the Y lent us a sound system, Troop 45 came out and gave us additional help, Michael Garrison is on video, Sotheby's, the school district, even the candidates helped in many ways in putting this together. So a community event for the community, by the community, and of the community, and that's a big reason why I like to live in Westlake Village, and I hope you do as well. There was one more group that was hugely tolerant and helpful through this whole thing, and it was my family, my wife Audrey, and Jordan and Erin, and I want to thank them. So now, onto the debate. Quick review of the rules that the candidates have all agreed to. Each candidate has a four-minute opening statement, and then a two-minute closing at the very end. The candidates have chosen numbers out of a hat to determine the random order, and we have a series of questions, some of them will be asked by people in the audience, and others that I will ask on behalf of the community as they've been submitted into Westlake Revelations. Based on the questions that we've had over the last couple of months, we've put together a really great list, and we've worked really hard to make sure that the residents told us what they wanted to know about, and we've made sure that those are the questions that are asked first. Over the past few days, we gave all the candidates a list of most of the topics that we'll be asking about, so that they have a chance to investigate each of them, but they've not been given the specific questions. Time permitting, we will take additional questions from the audience, and if we can do that, we'll ask you to raise your hand and be called upon. Each candidate will have one minute to answer a question, and we'll rotate the order. Some questions are complex, so each candidate may use one extra minute, one time, at their discretion, for one of the questions. To maximize the candidates' times, some questions will have a bit of an overview that we will do, so the candidates don't have to worry about that, and they can take time on what their position is. The candidates have a monitor in front of them, and you can see one here on the floor that gives them an idea when they're out of time, and with that, enough of the rules, except for one more thing. Each of these people are our neighbors. Essentially, this position, while elected, is a volunteer position. In short, they each deserve our thanks, our respect, especially as we ask them questions. So our first candidate to speak tonight is Mrs. Klessel.
Just gonna do a quick test, okay? Everybody hear me fine? Good evening, it's really a pleasure to be here tonight. My family, my husband and youngest daughter moved here eighteen years ago. We were attracted by the quality environment, the good schools, the caring neighbors. I fell in love with the area and almost immediately jumped in and tried to offer a helping hand. Whether working full-time or part, I took the time to work in the schools and in the community. Four years ago, I was elected as your councilperson, and I have to say, I love it. I love listening to your concerns, your dreams, and coming up with solutions together. I'm proud of my accomplishments, what you and I have done in the past four years. The city is getting better and better. Look around you, beautiful new streetscape, that's not only beautiful, it's functionally better, less water, less maintenance, new, more welcoming monuments and signs, new park equipment. Yes, I know, this took a while, but we really listened to what you, the residents, and our kids at the fifth grade class at White Oak had to say. And we have also increased the support of our schools, better communications with our residents, more services, like electronic waste pickup, longer library hours, and hopefully soon, better cell service. But most importantly, a growing sense of community. Our TGIF series, is that me making that? Concerts in the park encourage inclusiveness. We are a village, but this could not happen without fiscal resources, money. And I know many of you would like to believe that we can get along on our property tax alone, but out of that huge bill that you pay every year, the average amount that goes to the city coffers per residential unit is only $298, less than a buck a day. Yet it costs us more than $2,000 to provide your basic services. How do we make up that difference? Business, and finding the balance between businesses, commercial, open space, and residential. And I think your city excels at this, because at this point, 55% of the city is still open space, only 3.7% is commercial. This commercial is what powers or helps power our city, makes our dreams come true. So the net result of our economic vitality and feeling of community is a city that holds and attracts residents that are engaged like you and quality businesses. It's smart growth, it protects our future, and isn't this what it's all about? On my first campaign, I called this more of what we moved here for, not as more as in quantity, but in quality. And I remain as committed now as I did then, to meeting the challenges that face our city, and to protect and enhance our enviable way of life. I hear you, and I know you would like to add effective street lighting. In fact, this is a number-one issue that I hear as I'm walking around now. Create more recreational opportunities for everyone, from youth through seniors. Increase bicycle and pedestrian safety. Plan for a community center, or at least more gathering spaces. Promote smart growth policy and put a lid on traffic. Together, we will maintain and enhance our enviable way of life. I look forward to your questions later and to working with you in the next four years. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Theodore Corwin, I prefer to go by Ted. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Neil for putting this all together. He's been running around for the last few weeks like a one-armed paper hanger. I am a board-certified plastic surgeon, who has lived and worked in Westlake Village for the last thirty years. Our council has never had a physician as a member. Health issues are high on the list of concerns, not only of our city, but nationally. Locally, we are still feeling the loss of our hospital and emergency room. We are concerned about rapid medical response, timely treatment in the emergency room, good medical care, and we are wisely interested in healthy living and wellness issues. This is the perfect time to have a physician on the city council. But I'm not only a physician. A medical practice is a business, and I'm the managing partner of our medical practice. We are five board-certified plastic surgeons, we have a surgery center with two operating rooms. As managing partner, I'm in charge of the finances, the employees, and the purchasing. So I bring to the council both business skills and medical skills. I think everyone here would agree that they would love to live in a city that has an abundance of open space and parks, good public schools, beautiful landscaping, little traffic, clean air, a community center, hiking, biking, and jogging trails, and a farmer's market. That would be a great city to live in. On the other hand, none of us here would like to live in a city with an overabundance of commercial and industrial property, heavy traffic, and unsightly commercial buildings. Unfortunately, we can't have it both ways. In order to have some of one, we must have some of the other, and this is called compromise. In order to maintain that city-in-the-country atmosphere which we're looking for, with all of those attributes that I previously mentioned, we must have some amount of business to foot the bill, and we need to have a good relationship with that business. It is up to our city council, with your input, and I emphasize, with your input, to make these compromise decisions. If you elect me to the city council, I may not agree with you on every issue 100% of the time, but I will listen to you, I will be unbiased, and I will vote the way you, the citizens of Westlake, would like. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? I want to thank Roxanne Stevenson and the residents of Oak Forest, Mr. Ticton, Westlake Revelations, my wife Helen, and my children Colin, Catherine, and Nicole for the opportunity to participate in this forum tonight. This is a great venue and a very beautiful setting. I am new to politics, but I'm not new to Westlake Village. Helen and I moved our family here fourteen years ago from Woodland Hills. The combination of the beauty of Westlake, a great school district, and a genuine positive nature of the people we encountered made the choice to move here very easy. I have many years of local community involvement. I have been an elected board member on the Trails HOA for nine years, and on the Architecture Committee for eight of these. I have been board president for the past six years. In 2003, I was appointed by the Board of Education to the Measure E Oversight Committee, and I joined the board of the Los Virginas Educational Foundation, also in 2003, where I served as vice president. I have been on the LVUSD Technology Vision Committee since inception in 2005, and I led the effort to modernize the district's web technology. The city council appointed me to the Cultural Recreation Committee in 2002. This committee oversees the TGIF Summer Activity Series at City Hall, the concert at Brinnis-Bennett Park, the annual city celebration and last year's 25th city anniversary, and is integral to all the park upgrades currently underway. I'm invested in our community here. I am committed to preserving the look and feel of the Westlake Village that we all love. This continues to be a great place to raise a family, and is fast becoming a great place to retire as well. I have met many residents all over the city who came here in the late 1960s and early 70s. I met one such original, Ida Cohen, who is turning 102. She moved here as a senior citizen, and she has spent nearly half of her life as a senior citizen. Mrs. Cohen makes my 50 years look like the new 30. We need to address the needs of our seniors now. We need to address, we need to have a municipal government that appreciates and enhances the value of living here for everyone in its borders. I'm running for council to bring voice, experience, and responsive organizational expertise to the council. I am ready to build on my extensive and relevant community service experience to be the new guy with the listening ear on the council. I've had a career in the television industry for 27 years, producing television shows. It's very much like running a small town. So much planning and so many different demands from different perspectives, and all important to the outcome of the production. Some towns would be envious of the budgets we have, but few would be envious of our schedule. In 1988, after nine years in various industry positions, Warner Brothers hired me as an assistant director to run the stage operations for the sitcom Murphy Brown. In short order, I became a producer, and for the next nine years, I was responsible for scheduling, hiring, coordinating, and filming of a weekly sitcom with a weekly budget of $1.2 million, or roughly $290 million, over the nine-year period. I managed the famous and not-so-famous on a production team of over 100 people who reported directly to me. The series won awards, including numerous Emmys. I received an Emmy nomination, and the directing team, which I was a part of, won the Best Director Award three times. Producing a hit show is a wonderful, yet unusual experience, and it is fleeting. In 1997, at age 40, I decided to go back to school. I attended Pepperdine's MBA program while still producing the show. I completed the rigorous program in two years, but I still learned something new every day. Next, convincing Helen to marry me and having three of the best kids in the world, Pepperdine was one of the best experiences of my life. For the past nine years, I have run my own consulting company, serving several independent television productions or related technology companies. I handle all human resource activities, from writing handbooks and insurance benefits to database management, information technologies, and workflow processes throughout the entire organization. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I would first like to thank Neil and all the people who arranged this wonderful meeting tonight, and give us all an opportunity to speak to our neighbors and tell about our goals. And I too, like all the other candidates, love this Westlake Village community. My husband Ray and I, we've been married, I've been married to Ray for 23 years, moved to this wonderful community about 20 years ago, and immediately fell in love with it. We said, how do we sign up to live here? When we did move here, well, first I'll give you a little background. Prior to my marriage to Ray... Thank you. Prior, can you hear me? Prior to my marriage to Ray, I was the corporate litigation insurance administrator for a publicly-held company, which handled, which was with 27 subsidiaries throughout the United States. I handled all the litigation programs, reviews, and resolution reserves. I set up budgets. I was responsible for all insurance renewals and policies of $20 million, negotiations, and reserves. I also was responsible for the implementation of all risk management programs, which is very important, because I had to oversee this for all our 27 subsidiary companies throughout the US and abroad, and to be sure, and I've had a lot of leadership qualities and served on a number of committees for my corporation, where I had to be committee chair with presidents and CEOs of all these various companies. And sometimes, when you're working with engineers and architects, it's kind of like that good old boy. I was the only female, and I was only in my 30s at the time, but they won my respect because I followed through, and I saved the company millions of dollars through my negotiating skills. When Ray and I moved here 20 years ago, as I said, we fell in love with this community, and I immediately got involved. We both served on the Sensible Growth Committee, and from that point on, I moved on to Westlake Island Holmenor Association, where I was the vice president for three years. During that time, I also, with the assistance or our help, and certainly help, Jim Polly and I, who was our past president, led in the design and development of our gatehouse and our entryway, the lighting and landscaping of all the green belts and common area. It was quite a task that took me, you know, approximately about a year, but it's something I'm extremely proud of. From that point on, I've served on Westlake Lake Management for three years. I was on the executive board, as well as chairperson for the Rules and Regulations Committee. And it was interesting, because one of my tasks one day was, there was a buck that swam across the lake to the island where I live, the island, and I got a call saying, we have a buck that's on a neighbor's property, and the lake manager said to me, what are we gonna do? I said, I don't know, let's go out on the lake and take a look at it, and then I thought, what am I gonna do, lasso it or something and bring it back to the Santa Monica Mountains? So we had some interesting situations that occurred. I've also served on the Westlake Village Grants Committee Program. I was appointed twice. I've been a board of directors for the, excuse me, a board of directors for the yacht club, and also chaired the charity Regatta for three years. And what really was so special about that is because two of my, the charities that are very close to my heart, Casa Pacifica, Creative Smile, which is an animal-assisted therapy, and Casa Pacifica, where I'm currently vice president, and this is my second term, receive significant amount of monies from that. I'm currently on the two chambers of commerce and in the Westlake Women's Club. I love this community, and I want to see change. I've lived in the community...
Keep going, keep going.
Okay, I have lived in this community, as I said, and as of late, I've been seeing developments that I'm not real happy with. I've heard this expressed in the community as well. I feel it's important to implement a Citizens Advisory Committee, which would consist of architect, engineers, designers, and also committee volunteers who would help assist the city in future developments. I also believe that there should be three-dimensional rendering, so that the community could truly understand the design in terms of height, mass, setbacks, and footprint, as well as, as well as an overlay of the projected site. Anyway, I really do look forward to running. I hope you'll select me as your candidate, and I thank you for listening to me.
Now we're gonna go ahead and start the questions here. Our first question is about sidewalks and lighting. Recently, there's been a rash of pedestrian industries, and worse yet, deaths. Many in the community would like to see sidewalks and sidewalk ramps, not only on the derelict but also surrounding the lake. What are your thoughts on both of these types of sidewalks? And on a related note, how do you balance that some residents would like to see more street lighting, or to make it brighter, while others want to see less lighting to reduce light noise and to see the sky? Dr. Corwin, you're gonna be the first one up.
Lighting is an interesting issue, and the problem I think we have right now is we only have one, we only have one kind of lighting, these very tall halogen lights that broadcast lights across the entire city. I think with a little creativity in landscape design, we could directly light our sidewalks with some low lighting, and being in favor of the green things, I think solar lighting would be a good idea. And also putting lights on timers, so that they're not on late into the night, maybe just into the evening. I am definitely in favor of sidewalks. I'm an exercise buff, I like my bicycle trails. People are forced in many areas in our city to walk in the bicycle trails, because there are no sidewalks. I would put a sidewalk all the way around the lake.
Mr. Davis.
Lighting is a complicated topic, because there are so many elements to it. You have to have a certain amount of light on the street to make it safe, and that often spills into the, becomes light pollution, and it makes it difficult to have sort of a pleasant evening, when a lot of things are all glaring. So while we do have these kind of freeway-style lights that were very good forty years ago, I believe that as the lights become in need of repair or redoing, the infrastructure change, that would probably be the time to actually make a decision of what is available in the technology at that time. I think it would be very, very expensive just to wholesale and change it because of a style challenge. With regards to sidewalks, there are definitely places in Westlake Village that need sidewalks. Pedestrian safety is a paramount concern to me. We're not in the country as we were once, and sidewalks are important.
Carol, before I start, pull the microphone closer to you, so that you can hear. Just pull the whole stand, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Try it now.
Can you hear me? I'll look at that lady in the back and see if she can hear me. All right, first of all, I think that safety should be considered first in regards to sidewalks. If people are forced to walk in the streets into traffic, or if they have to walk on the bike paths, I certainly think that that something should definitely be considered to handle and to consider replacing, or at least to put a sidewalk there. You know, being a past risk manager, my concern would be for safety issues and also the potential liability for our city, so I would definitely want to look into that. As far as the lighting, I did look into that, and they do even actually have, today's technology has dimmers, so that at certain hours, like let's say after midnight or something, the lights could be dimmed in areas if that became a light pollution issue. I did, as I mentioned earlier, worked on lighting and landscaping where I lived for about a year, and of course, we did face issues with neighbors and lights glaring in their windows, so you do have to take cases, you know, each situation on a case-by-case basis, but I think the technology is there, and I would be more than happy to help serve on that. Thank you.
Mrs. Klessel, just begin, just so we can hear you.
Okay. Well, we all know our city was designed to look like the country, and it's a look we really like, but time and technology has changed. Better? And safety is a paramount concern. We do have to reevaluate where we have sidewalks and lights, and that same technology that's made the changes in our community, I think, will help us today in solving these issues creatively. We need to first look and see where people walk and why, establish what the habits are, and where the major safety problems are, and then look at changing those areas first. Because as the other members have all said here, it is very expensive to do new sidewalks and lighting, but it does need to have to be done, and I think we all agree that we need to look at it and move on it quickly.
So before I go on to the next question, I'd like to ask Don Rosenberg to come on up, he's gonna ask a question after this. For our second question, many, probably most, of the residents of Westlake Village would like to have a hospital here again. It's now clear that that's not a realistic option for a variety of reasons. That said, the need for quality medical services is still there, in particular, it takes 15 to 20 minutes or more to get to Los Robles Hospital in case of emergency, and a whole lot longer if there's traffic. What is your plan to improve medical services, in particular, medical emergency services? And what other ideas do you have to improve the health of the city's residents? The first one on this is Mr. Davis.
Nothing would be finer than to have a hospital here. I think the economics do preclude us from being able to do it. Can you hear me now? Medical emergency response is largely that comes from the fire department here, and the paramedics. They receive an extensive amount of training, and ongoing training through the EMT program. Many things have changed over the years here. I talked to Captain Schwagert, who is a captain of the 144, and he tells me that the amount of effort that goes into their training and what they have now is far superior than what they've ever had in the past. Terrible emergencies, people are airlifted out of here, and they can airlift somebody out of here within about eight minutes. So we can't bring a hospital any closer, but we can do better in how we respond. And one of the things I think we can do is add some technology, so that our fire engines and our emergency vehicles are equipped with something called an opticon. An opticon is a device that actually triggers the stoplights, so that it goes and changes so that it can go in favor of the emergency responder.
Yes, I agree with Ned. I have also worked towards a goal of bringing a hospital here at one time, and it just wasn't feasible. I worked on another campaign, and that was definitely a goal, but because of the bureaucracy, you know, it's a consideration. One issue that I believe is that perhaps to be more proactive in seeking remedies to bring more healthcare services here, perhaps an emergency room. I don't know in the future, because of all the emergency rooms closing now, if the state wouldn't relax their rules or their laws, and that's one of the reasons I'd be concerned about giving up our public use of a hospital facility. The other thought was... The other thought would be to co-venture with our sister cities, perhaps to set up a hospital district. But one thing I really feel is an ad hoc committee, and perhaps with Dr. Corwin, who probably has more information and more knowledge on that area than I do. Thank you.
Let's try that again. I think it's okay if I hold it up. Okay. Emergency service is a big concern. I keep hearing that we have lousy emergency service, but I could tell you from my own 911 experience, it worked quite well. So I think what we have to do is analyze which emergency services we're short on. Is it due to heart attacks, strokes, major trauma, or what? Look at that first, see where our shortfalls are. Then in researching, as everybody has said, you know, bringing a new hospital here is about impossible. The city of Seattle found that same problem, and that's a big city, and they couldn't bring another hospital in. What they developed, and it's a horrible name, but they call these moving emergency units, Mobi Pigs. They trained their citizenry to be first responders, and then they employ these, actually, emergency rooms on wheels, and they have really responded well to the community, and other cities are starting to follow suit. We need to get in touch with them and look at this idea in detail.
I think we're all pretty much ready to accept the fact that we're not going to get another hospital, we're not going to get an emergency room. In this economic environment, it just isn't gonna happen. And if we accept that and then move on, let's work with what we have. And what do we have? We have Los Robles Hospital in Thousand Oaks. And I think what we need to do, the city council does have a medical committee, I understand, but they just haven't met in a long time. I'd like to reactivate the medical committee and develop a close relationship between the city and Los Robles Hospital, where we're all going to have to go to get our medical care if we desire any medical care at all. I think if we develop a close relationship, a committee with members from the city, and members from the hospital, and members from the medical community, that at least we can face the problems, realize what they are, and you don't have to go one at a time to the hospitals complaining, that your city can be your advocate.
So our next question is, our first question by someone from the audience, and I'd like to hand the mic over to Don Rosenberg.
Thank you, Neil, and I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming out here and participating. Right now, our city has an operating budget surplus. One of the city council's greatest responsibilities is determining how to spend those monies on capital improvements and the like. Some of our revenues are at risk of decline. For example, Costco recently announced that we'll be building a Newbury Park store, and it's estimated that we'll lose about $150,000 in tax revenue as people who live closer go to that store. Would the city substantially build out? Do you believe that the city needs additional revenues? And if so, what do you see as good, as good ways to increase the city's revenue?
First one up is Mrs. Classic.
Again? All right.
You're the first one.
Okay. Well, to begin with, I know our city is built out, but the city is also over thirty years old in some areas, and there's commercial development that will very soon probably be requiring new development or remodels, just like our city and our neighborhoods where you see development of new homes or tear downs. The same thing will probably apply to commercial development. I feel that it's very important for the city to keep up with cost, to follow trends in materials and labor, so that we don't face a shortfall, and that when we go to the developers, that we make sure on these developments that they have enough monies in mitigation fees to keep up. I feel that unfortunately, we have been very, very secure in our budget up until recently, and because of the widening of the street, we have fallen short, and that is because the past has, the past review or the past situation hasn't kept up. In other words, the city did not collect enough mitigation fees from the developers.
I need to interrupt you. It's one minute was on the question. Mrs. Classic.
Thank you, Neil. Yes, the city finances are good at the moment, but we know that we are developed out. But I'm not totally chagrined about that. The city keeps attracting good businesses. We've seen it before in redevelopment areas, areas that we considered almost functionally obsolete, like Ray Pack and all, have been replaced by other viable businesses. And I think it's our attitude here that will keep attracting better business, and we just have to keep our eyes on bringing in the ones that will also help our quality of life, help our coffers. In addition, of course, we have to attract grant money. Your city's been doing very well at that. As for the mitigation fees, I have to comment, the problem was, most of those came so many years ago. At that time, they were enough, but when the building doesn't happen till ten years down the line, what we earn in interest doesn't keep up. That's true. But we have ways of tackling it, and we have with the grants we've received.
It's always best to be third. It is the businesses in our city that fuels the economy, that puts the money in the coffers. And we have to do two things, and I think it's pretty simple. One, we have to always attract new business. As mentioned, we are primed for some redevelopment in several areas in the city. I think we need to attract new business, good business, and we need to treat the businesses that are here very well, so that they can, they can survive, they can continue, and they continue to put money into the city coffers. Simple solution.
Mr. Davis.
All of the previous candidates get an A in economics. That's basically all you can do. You don't wanna, you don't wanna raise taxes to make more money. You just need to keep an attitude of a city that can keep, keep the people positive, keep the companies coming in, keep your school district strong, so you can have new families coming in to create demand, and that demand will create the kind of environment that you need to attract the kind of businesses that need to come here that we can get our money from. It's pretty simple.
Our next question is in regards to traffic and noise levels caused by traffic. Westlake Village's population during a weekday goes from about eighty-five hundred to something like twenty thousand. Last year, traffic was particularly bad as the four traffic camera systems on Lindero were failing, and they've now been replaced as of April to the tune of a cost of about $80,000. Even so, office building traffic causes noticeable peaks at rush hour, and in the next year, another large office complex will be opening on Townscape. The city has recently conducted a study on the noise levels, particularly in concern to first neighborhood, and the study determined that it's not the dole or the wall, and worse yet, a sound wall to be built would shield only the golf course, but not much else. With all of that in mind, what plans do you have to reduce traffic in the city? And also, what plans do you have for trying to reduce the freeway noise level within the city? First up on this is, this is Classic.
I'm gonna take the noise issue first, because the studies did show it wasn't the dole building, it was the increase of traffic and the longer flow time. Traffic starts really early in the morning, 4:00 AM now. That's when it is so quiet, so you're hearing it more. And there's really only a couple things that we know we can do that work. One is changing the road surface, and two is slowing traffic. Well, I can't imagine we're gonna slow the freeway commuters down. So actually, I've taken the initiative, and I've already written Governor Schwarzenegger and our Assemblywoman Brownlee, and asked them if they could use our area as a test case to try to repave with something with more chip, the asphalt tire and chip combination. Nope, I haven't got a response. I think this is gonna take many letters, but it is a possible solution. As for traffic mitigation, you know, the city is working on it, widening Lindero, and as offices come up, we're trying to find ways, maybe to keep the people there a little longer, so we don't have so much peak hour. Spread it out a bit. That's our best defense.
The, the, am I on? The noise problem, the traffic problem, there's an old saying that anything can be solved if you have enough money. We could just build a 101 tunnel under Westlake, and that would solve the issue. What we have to do is get the people who know what they're doing, the traffic engineers and the acoustic engineers, and figure out, one, what the problem is, then come up with the list of possible solutions, and then the cost for those possible solutions. Eventually, I think we can come up with something, especially in the realm of traffic. We greatly improved the traffic flow on Lindero Canyon with the improved camera system. So I think there are simpler solutions than widening the streets or digging tunnels under Westlake.
Mr. Davis.
Decimal, decibels for decimals. As loud as it gets, that's how many more figures to the left of the decimal point you're gonna need to get it quiet. It would be a money thing, and all of that money spent probably still would make it insignificantly quieter. You have larger tires, you have low profile tires, you have road surfaces. All of these things contribute to louder sounds, and the volume, every candidate has spoken to, is all part of it. It's a numbers thing. I don't wanna say you can't do anything about it, but I don't think, at this point, you're gonna be able to do anything really meaningful about it. It's something we live with, and you just have to hope. I think that technology will catch up, and when we resurface a road, and the tires will get softer, I guess, it'll just have to be quieter then.
And Mrs. Classic.
Yes, well, I feel we should be a little more proactive about it. I too was at that meeting with the expert that was retained by the city, who said that the noise level or decibels was normal for the city. What city I'm wondering about is it Westlake Village or the San Fernando Valley. The area has changed. The noise level has gotten louder. There has been new development as of late, and my concern, and although it's said that the hardscaping didn't impact it, it could be bouncing back. There's a lot of foliage that was removed from the corridors, which might impact it. But I did also look up and review this issue, and I know that in certain cities, they put berms, so they're not sound walls, but berms along the freeway to absorb the sound, and also decorate it with foliage or planting so that you don't see this. So I do feel that you can be, we can be more proactive and look into that. Thank you.
Of course, I'm sitting right below the speaker. Mrs. Finders, would you come up for the question after this one? Our next one is an easy one for me to ask, because it's really short and needs no background. What was your position on Lowe's? And at a time that, at the time that Measure Z was voted on, in other words, not today, but at the time that it was actually voted on, what was your reasoning behind your position? The first one up on this is Dr. Corwin.
When Lowe's was an issue, if you drove by our house, you would see vote yes on Lowe's, the Lowe's measure signs, and you would also see vote no on the Lowe's measure. And there were some pretty heated discussions over dinner, and I'm happy to say that my wife and I are still married, and we've put the Lowe's issue behind us. I really flip-flopped on that issue, and I went back and forth innumerable times. It was difficult for me because I was very attracted by the, by the money. I saw so many uses for that money. But I, on the other hand, I saw the problems that the, that the project would bring. I did ultimately vote yes, and my vote was canceled out by my wife. She voted no. But it was a difficult issue.
Mr. Davis.
Ted and I live on the same street. We had the same problem. I voted yes for Lowe's. It was not an easy decision, but the choices I saw were only between Lowe's or an office building. And the mitigating factor for me was the traffic issue that would be created at a peak hours. Thing about a traffic jam is, when you're in one, you know you're in one. And when there's just a lot of cars moving, but they're moving, you don't have the same sense of it. So that was my, my logic to voting yes on Lowe's.
Mrs. Classic.
Yes. For those of you who don't know, I was actively opposed to Lowe's, and went out in the community, spoke to my neighbors, because I felt, number one, the amount of traffic that would be brought into our city, sixty-six thousand extra car trips on our city streets a week, that equates to 1.2, 1,200,000, 200,000 car trips a year. That also included pollution, which I would be concerned about ingesting in my lungs and the children's lungs, the issue of delivery trucks at all hours of the night. And when we talk about money, and that we would have made a lot of money, you have to remember, the city streets also would have been damaged, and the fact that you would lose businesses because they couldn't compete with the Lowe's store. But most importantly, my concern for the surrounding communities. I felt very bad for them, worried of their concern for their property values. I wanna take the concern for the property values. How would you feel if the zoning, you were told your zoning is going to change after you purchased your home with the belief it was gonna be a business park, and you'd have to consider your property values? How would you feel if suddenly you were told that the golf course was sold, and suddenly they were gonna put a Lowe's there? How would you feel? I know the golf course cannot be sold. It's got a hundred or lease. My point is, how would people in this community feel if they put a Lowe's there instead of where it was supposed to be? Thank you.
Okay. I and the rest of council were very concerned with what was gonna happen on that lot before the Lowe's even came forward. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand square feet of office was what it was entitled to. We were looking for a viable alternative. Lowe's is the only one that came up with the financial backing to make it a reality. And as you know, the rumors going around, the fantasies that we could have a bowling alley, et cetera, were simply that, fantasies, because you've got that office space that's coming before the council now. So the reality of the situation is, a lot of this now is still being promulgated, is a lot of fantasies and just outright lies. Delivery trucks weren't going all through the city. You're forgetting that most of those cars were already here. These aren't new trips. In fact, it was shown in the EIR that the number of trips would actually be reduced. We don't have time tonight to rehash all of this, but I can tell you that out of what was available, I thought the Lowe's was the better choice for the city.
It's my great pleasure to introduce Mrs. Finders, who is the president of the Los Virginous School District Board of Education. She's gonna ask her next question.
Good evening. I'd first like to congratulate and thank all of you for your civic contributions and your role in our democratic community inside. Thank you. I'm asking a question on behalf of the board and on behalf of the district. Recently, the city of Westlake Village joined with the other three cities served by the Los Virginous Unified School District in an effort to provide additional funding support for the district's technology plan in 21st century learning. Districts such as Santa Monica, Malibu, Beverly Hills- Districts such as Santa Monica, Malibu, Beverly Hills, and Palo Alto, also lovely communities, have longstanding similar programs, which provide millions annually to improve and support their public schools. As we all know, excellent schools not only serve our students, they also help protect our property values, build strong communities, and ultimately help attract good business. On behalf of the district, the children we serve and the professionals we employ, we are immensely grateful for this contribution. With that as background, my question is, do you plan to continue supporting this approach to provide multi-city resources for our local public schools?
Mr. Davis, you're first on this one.
In short, yes. We live in a global community now, and Westlake Village is part of that. And we need to be very cognizant of what's being taught in our schools, and what technology is available to our kids. If you were to go to college today, everything you do in relationship to that college is online. Not much at LVUSD is online for the kid to actually learn with. We need to keep moving forward in technology in that area. I think the LVUSD needs our help as a city, and all of the cities need to be cognizant. It's the one thing, the LVUSD is the one thing that makes us a global community. It's the one thing we share, all the way from Calabasas and Hidden Hills, all the way over to Westlake Village.
I wholeheartedly support that. I feel that anything that will improve our children's education absolutely is important, and I would support that, only though with the proviso that that money that would go to the technology would be earmarked for that. Thank you.
Yes and yes again. We're all saying yes. But an important issue that needs to be brought out here is, this money is going to the whole district, not just our one particular school, the only one we have in White Oak. And I agree with that concept, because our students don't stay in White Oak their whole life. They go on to Linderow, and then Agora High School, and out into the big world. They do need that technology. And if we ever get to the point where we have more than enough technology, it'll be time for the cities to look again, all the cities, and see what else we can do to keep our schools strong. Because we also know that the schools in this area, because of the wealth of the community, don't get a lot of those extra state funds, like ESL, you know, English as a Second Language, or lunch funds, et cetera. Our city dollars help make up that difference, and I'm proud that the cities here are strong enough to be able to support their schools.
I think this may be the one issue that we're all in agreement on, strongly in agreement on. I was raised in a, in a city in the Midwest, where whenever a school bond issue came up, it always passed. Money went to the schools, no questions asked. I have four children who have gone through the school district, through Westlake Schools. You couldn't have a better school district. And in my mind, if the school needs money, you give them money. So, yes.
Our, our next question goes to what took place last year with the city council reorganization meeting. Last year, the council voted for Sue McSweeney to continue on as mayor instead of Jim Bruno. This deviated from an unwritten tradition. What did you think of that action? How would you have handled it, and why? And obviously, for Mrs. Klessig, when you answered this, the question would be, why you made this decision? First one up is Mrs. Kirschbaum.
To date, I still do not have a clear understanding as to why Mr. Bruno was not selected as mayor. It really, so I'm very perplexed to answer the question about that. I feel that the city council broke a 20, 25-year tradition, and it really saddened me. He was the voice of a majority of this community who fought Lowe's, or proponents against Lowe's. And I think I would have handled it differently, unless there was some act that Mr. Bruno did, which I don't believe there was. I would have made him the mayor. I think what happened is it split our community up. This was after the Lowe's issue, and it caused more diversity in our, in our community and a split. So it really saddens me. I have no answer to the reason that Mr. Bruno was not selected as mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so why did the council pass over Jim Bruno? You know, this is getting to be such a manufactured issue. Don't yell at me about breaking a 25-year-old tradition. It happens all the time. It happened to the east of us, to the west of us, and Agora, and Thousand Oaks. You make that change, why? Because you do what is in the best interest of the community, period. After the divisive Lowe's vote, the city, you, needed a strong leader, not tied to any issues, somebody who could move forward, gain consensus with the community and the council. That person was Sue McSweeney. She fit the objective. And as I have said in the past year, and I keep saying time and time again, we have seen the best city government we have in a while. Consensus and results. You don't let traditions stand in the way of good government. And I really don't understand this constant haranguing to hear the details. Some of you out there are supposed to be his friends. You want details, details, details. Do you want me to hurt the man and his family more? I just don't get it. Why? I didn't do it earlier, and I'm not going to do it now. And I have an apology to make to Mr. Bruno. I've already done it privately, and now I'll do it publicly. Couple weeks ago, I got hot under the collar, just like I'm getting hot under the collar now, and I said, after a vicious tongue-lashing, that he did something illegal. Well, it wasn't illegal, but it did expose your city, your treasury, to the possibility of a major lawsuit. We did dodge that bullet. It didn't happen. Jim Bruno is stepping down. He's leaving with dignity. I'd like to leave it that way.
I've had the pleasure of meeting with Jim Bruno. I don't think you'll find a nicer man. And I find him to be extremely sincere, and I think his, his work with the council and what he did was very, in his mind, was very ethical, and he was working for the benefit of the city. Unfortunately, I and we were not privy to what was going on in the city council. They made their decision based on information that we don't have, so I don't think we can make a judgment on, did they do the right thing or not do the right thing. The city has moved forward. We have a good mayor. Jim is unfortunately stepping down, but I think he is settled with the issue. I think it's time to move on.
I think Dr. Corwin put it very well. We need to move on past Measure Z. We need to move on past Jim Bruno. And we need to bring the city together and move on to figure out how we can continue to make our city very strong financially, and just the happiest place on earth to live.
I'd like to ask Mr. Adler to come on up, and he'll ask the question after this. So for our next question, if you were working now, what is your current profession? If you are retired, what was your last profession, and when did you retire? Either way, who do you now or then work for? And is, was that a management position? In other words, did you manage others in that position? And what skills from your current or past professions can you apply towards the city council? In other words, how's your work experience going to help you in being a city council person? Feel free to speak to your educational background, credentials, and other associations. The first one up on this is Mrs. Klessig.
Well, I've done a lot over quite a few years. Most recently, now I am a landscape designer. After a very hectic career in advertising, and helping my husband grow a couple of large, successful businesses, I thought being a landscape designer would allow me the time to pursue something a little more creative. At one point, I managed over 150 people in five countries. Now, I manage myself, and I love it. It gives me a lot of spare time to devote to something else I love, which is our city. Boy, there's a lot in that question. Skills from business, you know, it's interesting, because as a businessperson, especially when you have your own business, you learn that the buck stops here. When you get on council, you learn something new. It isn't your idea, it's your city's residents' ideas. It's what you do as a council together. I think my years of listening to different business gripes helped me in that regard, because I do love listening to your concerns and making dreams come true.
I'm going to reiterate what I said in my opening statement, because I addressed most of these issues. I'm a physician, I'm a plastic surgeon, and healthcare issues are of primary concern in, in our city at this moment. We've addressed that through an earlier question. I know the healthcare community. I know the doctors in town, I know the hospital administrators, I know how it works. I think it would be a great benefit to our city council. I also run the business of a medical practice. We have about 20 employees, and as I said, I manage the employees, I manage the finances, and I do all the purchasing. So the combination of business experience and healthcare background, I think would be a great benefit for the council.
Like Ted, I think I went through a lot of my educational background, and what I do for a living, or what I, I don't, I work for myself. I read a lot of books about management. Sounds boring, but actually, there's a lot of things that are challenging. It all comes down, your city, and a company, and your family. It all comes down to people. People are your greatest asset and your greatest resource. And if you can't manage people, you can't get along, you're not going to get very far. And that's just what I do. I don't do what they do, the people that I consult with. I just help them do what they do better. I'm like BASF. That's what I do.
Yes. As I had already explained before, I was the corporate litigation insurance administrator for a publicly-held company that had 27 subsidiaries throughout the United States and abroad. As I said, I was responsible for all insurance and all legal review, reserves, and resolution. I had to work with attorneys. I have also handled all insurance renewals, and as I said, $20 million policies, $500,000 reserves. And it really helped save the company millions of dollars in guarantees. One of my favorite strengths, or one of my favorite attributes, is I love to negotiate. It's my favorite sport. And I have very good negotiating skills. You can ask my husband. I feel that I certainly could be a team player, but I think you have to enhance and support people that you work with, so that they produce better. As I said, I worked with presidents and CEOs, and I was a chairperson of these committees, and had to implement risk management functions. So I believe that I bring to the table a lot of skills.
I need to interrupt you. Sorry, one minute was up.
All right, thank you.
Our next question is going to be asked by Mark Adler, who has served seven years on the board for Westlake Baseball, including three years as the commissioner of Westlake Baseball.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here tonight. This question, I'm going to read it. To all of you, several years in the making, there's a tentative agreement in place for the Y to trade the property it owns on Linderow for a much larger property north of To Boulevard and west of Linderow. The Y would give the land to the city of Westlake Village to use for a sports park, in exchange for the city grading the entire property. The vast majority of the area, which would be about 20 acres or more, would be used for the sports park, and the balance for a new Y building. The Y would be responsible for paying for the building of the Y facility and a portion of the grading site improvements. While the several million the city would need to spend for grading is a considerable sum, it's obviously a bargain compared to acquiring the land today. That all said, what are some of the community benefits that you see for the joint sports park-Y recreational complex?
So our first one up is Dr. Corwin.
I think the only real question on this issue is, can we get, can we come up with the money? And if, and I think we should fight, scratch, and do whatever we need to do to come up with the money. You have an opportunity to buy a considerable piece of property in Westlake for about, by my calculations, about half of its value. The Oak Canyon people who were involved in the swap are, of course, very much in favor of doing this. We would develop a sports park in a great location. It's right there on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, out of the way, wouldn't bother anybody. And when it comes to developing things for kids, I'm always in favor of that. I see it as a total win-win proposition, and I think we just need to figure out a way to come up with the money.
Mr. Davis?
I think it's a great compliment to people in this city to be able to work together to trade land in 2007. I mean, that's just like old west stuff. I mean, that's just, to me, that's the greatest thing to happen. It's a total benefit. It's a quality of life issue. When you can create that kind of asset with the cooperation of a group, of different groups of people, if we can find a way to make the funding work over a period of years, I'm sure that if we have the proper planning and the proper research, that I just can't see, I mean, that's, it's, Ted says, that would be a bargain.
Yes, I think the idea of a Y is wonderful. I think it's something important for the kids. However, there is a concern I have. The issue of widening the streets right now, and I truly haven't had a great deal of information on this, because many of the meetings have been in closed session, so I can't make an as intelligent assessment as I'd like. However, with the arterial street widening right now, my only concern is, in the event that the street widening ends up costing the city more money, which is possible, because it happens many times with overruns, and I guess the projection is 18.5 million now. We did get a grant from the city that it doesn't go beyond that. Because I want to be fiscally responsible and be sure that we're able to do the city streets, and have a Y, and make sure that we don't bankrupt our city. I support the Y as long as I know that we have enough money in our budget.
Thank you, Neil. The sports park, I am really quite excited about the prospects, for all the reasons that were mentioned here already. It's a fabulous partnership. It's not only for the kids, it's for adults, too. It could give us possibly our community center. But as I am your city council person, I am still listening to you. I can't give you all of my thoughts on this, quite frankly. I am open to your thoughts. They're still coming in. We're having a work-
We're having a workshop, which I want to point out, next Wednesday night, October 17th, where the city will present a lot of the financial concerns, some tentative plans, and really get your feedback, and I will be listening to you then, too. Thanks.
Our next question is about Sunrise. As many of you already know, Sunrise would like to build a 200-plus unit assisted living facility on the old Westlake Hospital property. To do this, the general plan for the city would no longer need to be changed, and we wouldn't need to change the zoning of public institutional, there's been other ways worked around it. But it does mean, the city still has the ability to vote yes or no on a project like this, because it is an unusual public institutional zone. This is very different from other properties that are out there that have development agreements. With that all in mind, what is your position on Sunrise? And why? First up on this is Mr. Davis.
As proposed, I couldn't support Sunrise. It's too big, the scope of it, the height of it is too high.
It's too big. The scope of the project is too much for that particular piece of property. I realize and appreciate the economics that HCA has in needing to get the kind of money out of that property that they spent for it. But that's the center of town now. That really is as close to the center of town as the center can be. And if we have a community center, and I'm sure the YMCA can do things that are community-oriented, but if we had a community center, I think that's the place it should be. It should be accessible to people, it's centrally located, and if you want to talk about the center of town, I think that's the place to be.
Yes, just to make it clear, I'm not opposed to senior living. My mother-in-law, who's 101 years old, lives in that facility. Also, my aunt, and they're beautiful. However, I do agree with Ned. I think it's way too massive for that community in terms of traffic, the height, and in particular, the change in zoning. My feeling is that when a developer comes to us and asks for zoning change, I feel that we should tell the developer to come back to us and have the plans within our general plan. So I do not support that facility as it is.
Again, this is coming up for a hearing, but I can tell you my concerns, and I, like the rest of you, have said, am concerned about the size, it's massing, and another is about the ingress and regress. You know, one of the main roads comes out onto Lakeview Canyon. You know, as you get older and your sight and your reflexes go down, that's a busy street, you're going to be possibly turning left. This is an issue that we're going to have to pay close attention to. I like the idea of having a senior center. This community has asked to be able to age in place. Let's all look together and decide, is this the right place? Is this the right size for our area? Thank you.
And I agree, the plan as proposed is way too big for the middle of our city and for that property. And I agree with Ned. It is the heart of the city, and is that what we want to see in the heart of our city? I'd love to see something more community-oriented in that location. I think the people who belong to Westminster Presbyterian Church are concerned because they're promised a parking lot with the new Sunrise facility. And I think anything that does go in there, we should look towards their concern and potentially give them the parking they're looking for. But the Sunrise project isn't it.
So, over the last week or two, there's been a whole lot of emails that I've gotten from into Westlake Revelations about the lake. And we'll talk a little bit about those, but also in broader terms about the lake. To give everybody some background, the lake is owned by the Westlake Lake Management Association, which is known as Wilma. And there's an agreement that governs the lake automatically, that automatically renews every 10 years or so, unless Wilma votes otherwise one year in advance. The last time it renewed was in 2000, and the next time it renews is in 2010. I've recently reviewed quickly the CCNRs for Wilma and the charter, and there's a constant stream of language about the lake not only being for the benefit of those that live on the lake, but for the residents of Westlake Village overall. And when it comes to the rights that it talks about, it talks about the good of the community, and it uses languages like irrevocable, perpetual, and things along those lines. With all that in mind, we have these questions. Are you in favor of Wilma changing from the agreements that have been in place over the last 40 years? Number two, are you in favor of expanding the lake use so that Westlake Village residents who do not live on the lake have a greater chance of being able to do so? For example, by expanding the number of slips available at the, near the Onklum. And number three, if Wilma wanted to work with the city on functions that would increase the use of the lake beyond where it is today, are you in favor of the city working with Wilma to do this? There's a lot to that. I'm going to give you a second there for everybody to think about it. First up on this one is Mrs. Kirschbaum.
Can you hear me? I've been hearing these rumors recently as well. First of all, the lake does have public use. Anybody who wants to rent a boat slip on the lake, I checked with our lake management office in Wilma, there's 238 boat slips on the lake. Currently, from what I understand, there's between 10 and 15 boat slips available. There are 25 boat slips reserved for Westlake Yacht Club. So if you wanted to get on the lake, you can either put in a request for the boat slips, or if you wish, you can go to the yacht club, join the yacht club, and you can have the availability of party boats or sailboats. If you want to bring your boat on the lake, a sailboat or a fishing boat, all you have to do is go to the Wilma office, you can get launch fees, pay for launch fees, insurance, and a sticker, and you can bring on a sailboat, and you can bring on a fishing boat. You can also be permitted, I have some time, you can also be permitted to fish on the lake, so there is public use. The community is invited to participate in that.
And I need to interrupt you, the one minute was used on an earlier question.
Sorry, okay.
Mrs. Klosek.
There are so many questions within this question, but first and primarily, let's look at the lake and the relationship with Wilma and the city. I think it's excellent. We've been working together on projects, and the city, you know, doesn't own the lake, it is a private lake, it will stay that way. I think Wilma is doing an excellent job in managing it. As Neil said, it is in perpetuity that there is some public access to the lake. Whether we have the right number of docks or not, that's, I know, spelled out in the CCNRs. Almost need to be reminded of some of the other parts of that question. And it was the intention of the master developer and grantor that all of the residents of Westlake shall have the opportunity to use it for recreational purposes. It's working well, let's keep it that way, let's keep enhancing the lake while we can do it together, and both sides agree. That's what it's all about, both sides. I just want to quickly hold up a map to show you what the greater Westlake area is. And we're out of time.
Wilma is an association just like all of the other homeowners associations in Westlake. And I think the relationship that the city has with Wilma is the same as it has with every homeowners association in the city of Westlake. It's a working relationship, they work side by side, they complement each other. The way we've had it for the past, I think we said 40 years, has worked well. I don't see any reason to change it. I would leave things the way they are.
So many things are going through my head. One is a song called "What Wilma Wants, Wilma Gets." You know, this is, sorry. I do think, yeah, I'm in the comedy business. I have to tell you that, as I was sitting here listening to this, I keep thinking about the American Constitution and how, what a perfect document that is. And 250 years later, we're still talking and marveling about what these guys did and what they developed in the country. And we're now almost 50 years later from the Hawaiian American Company and the documents they created that created all of this area, and it's still working great. And so I want to understand why we need to push it. If Wilma has done a great job in managing the lake to this point, I don't see why we should lose any confidence in them in the near future.
We're going to make this our last question. There's a lot more. No, we'll make this last one. This is an easy one, comparatively. The 2015 plan, and a Westlake Revelations poll, a straw poll, and a whole bunch more have indicated that the residents of the city would like to have a community center. The majority of the residents would like to have a community center. And specifically, a place for use by not only the residents, as a teen center, but also as a senior center. What are your thoughts on the community center? First one up is Mrs. Klosek.
I'm sorry, I didn't think it was me, I was kind of sitting back here. I love the idea of a community center, not only a community center, but more gathering places. You know, we tried to make that happen at City Hall, we have our TGIF series and the concerts at Bernice Bennett Park, but I do keep hearing that you want something else, something that you can call your own. I think we just need to find out what exactly that is, what you really want at the community center, where to put it, where to finance it, and make it happen.
We recently made a trip to China, and in the city of Beijing, there was this wonderful area where the people were gathered spontaneously. There was no organization, they were singing groups, they were playing cards, et cetera. And this is, when I was watching this, I envisioned this in the city of Westlake, and I thought, how wonderful would it be if we had a city center, a community center, where people, kids, seniors, everybody could gather, organize classes, organized music, and maybe just some spontaneous things. I think a community center would be a tremendous asset to our city, and I would work hard to see that it happened.
I don't know if Mrs. Ida Cohen has any idea that I'm talking about her tonight. I wanted to spend an hour and a half just talking with her. If Ida Cohen had a place to go, she would have an audience all day long with people her own age, if she could find them, and young children could learn so much from someone like her. And the kids walking around at the promenade with nothing to do, just hanging out, what a great place it would be if you could find a community center that could meet the needs at different times of the day for different groups. I just, a community center would just be the next part of paradise to be built here.
I wholeheartedly agree that we should have a teen and senior center. I think it would be wonderful for seniors for gathering plays, for activities, to keep their minds sharp, to have fun and meet with their friends. I also think having a teen center would be wonderful. You know, they have wonderful programs now for seniors that read to children, they've done this in libraries, and I think this would be a wonderful opportunity for even the seniors and the teens to gather and work on programs like that. So I wholeheartedly support a teen and senior center, and I think it'd be a wonderful benefit to our community.
So, Dr. Corwin, we're going to do the closing statements, and you're the first up for the closing statements. I'm going to give you the option of, if you wanted to stand up on the podium and dabble that mic, you can do that, or you will be to stay where you are. I'll turn it over to you now.
I'll stay where I am, because I have a brief closing statement, and I'm sure at this late hour, you're glad of that. I simply wanted to say, if health and medical issues are important to you, if you want a representative who will listen to you and hear what you have to say, and if you want somebody who will be your representative to the city council, then I think you should vote for me. And other than, please vote yes on measure E, that's all I have to say.
I think you can probably tell, there's two parts to my personality. There's a very serious side, and then maybe just a little bit of a humorous side to it. I think I'm the best choice for city council, for those reasons. When there's time to be serious, I can be serious, when it's time to just kind of lighten up, figure out what's going on, and come to a conclusion and a decision, we can do that. I think I offer balance and informed leadership. The city council is a cooperative body. The council must be consensus builders with each other, as well as with the citizens that they serve. Temperament is an important element to communication and cooperation. I believe I have the temperament. Understanding is what a leader must have to make a decision in the best interest of the group he or she represents. I believe I always seek for understanding. Listening, questioning, and patience are fundamental to discovering all of the information needed to get the understanding. Patience comes from experience. It is experience that gives a leader confidence to know how to make a decision and when it should be implemented. And I'll leave you with this thought. I am an optimist. And I want to just leave you with a quote. "The pessimist sees difficulty in every opportunity. The optimist sees the opportunity in every difficulty." That pretty much describes me, and I thank Winston Churchill for coming up with those words.
Sure. I seek to unify our community around the goal of preserving Westlake as a village against overdevelopment, excessive traffic, and projects that destroy the quality of our life. I am not against development, I'm in favor of sensible development. That's very important for you to know. I believe my past experiences and my present experience bring a blend of knowledge and capability of working as a team player. I've served on many committees and boards, and I feel that you need to enhance people on a committee to be a team player, but at the same time, I think there has to be some diversity. Otherwise, every issue you look at would be rubber stamped. And I think if you want to truly make a wise decision, you have to have diversity to look at every single angle, or you would have that danger. I look forward, I would hope you support me if you feel that you'd like to see an advisory committee, I hope you support me. And my goal is to preserve the village of Westlake, and if that's your goal, I hope you support me.
Thank you, and thank you, Neil. I think I have the track record to stand behind what I say, and that is that I do care for this community, and I have the fortitude and the outlook to keep working on your behalf. And I'd also like to leave you with a quote, this is kind of a very learned group up here, as you can tell. "Anybody can yell 'fire' and evacuate a building, but not everyone can make the right choice of where, why, and how to build a building that will serve us all." I think I can do that. I think I am your right choice, and I really do look forward to working with you for another four years.
So that concludes tonight's debate. Our intention is to make Our intention is to make the debate available for everyone to see on the internet and possibly on a cable channel. We're going to announce that on the Westlake Revelations email list and website, so make sure you're subscribed to that. It's at www.westlakerevelations.com. We want to thank our candidates tonight, and again, Oak Forest for hosting us, and all that everyone made, helped to do to make tonight possible. The candidates will remain to answer any questions you may have. And don't forget to vote on November 6th. Westlake Village residents are voting for three things: they're voting for two city council seats, two Board of Education members, and measure E, which generates $2 million a year for the schools. Thank you all for coming. Good luck.
I think we ought to all pause a moment and thank Mr. Tictin for all of his really hard work guys. This was a tremendous effort on many a many safe nights. Thank you.